Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. It is 6:00 PM. We are meeting at Gloucester High School at 32 Leslie O. Johnson Road in Gloucester, consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts 2022. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. I will not go through the public comment instructions right now because we are going to go into executive session. But I'd ask that you stand and smoke the flag. Ledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So for any of the public that is in attendance, we are going into executive session for approximately a half an hour. We will then come out and begin the business of the meeting. The public hearing, to be clear, regarding the naming of the new school will happen no sooner than 7:00 PM. We just wanted to make sure people could manage their time and set expectations for that particular public hearing. So we will be back in session when we come out of executive session. Motion to go into executive session for the purposes pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 39, Section 23B. Number one, to discuss collective bargaining with ASME unit A employees. And two, to discuss non-union personnel contracts. And I still want to...
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Ms. Bressel-Lansky?
Yes.
And Ms. Domenio?
Yes.
We are now going into executive session. We are back in open session. Chloe, so without objection, I would like to take the Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council report out of order. Without objection. Okay. Chloe, I saw that you unmuted. So there you are.
Hi.
Hi.
So news from GFS is that the Health Center has opened the Free Food Locker, where the program helps students who are in need of food. And the Life Scales Program has helped prepare 111 gift boxes filled with a variety of food. The NHS and Health Center students helped to pack orders for over 24 students who have accessed the Free Food Locker to take home food. And over 100 students have visited during the school day for a snack. The Library Learning Commons relaunched their senior essay volunteer program, where students are able to visit the library and receive help on their college essays. For common applications from the senior essay volunteer programs during the month of October, this program is available to the students during homeroom or English blocks. The robotic engineering and electrical engineering classes are sending five students to show off their projects at the GEF celebration on Thursday. These students consist of three seniors, one junior, and one sophomore. In student council news, the senior class has been selling semi-tickets for their dance on November 7. The junior, sophomore, and freshman classes are all on track in organizing their own fundraisers. The school bank has been open for a few weeks now and is seeing multiple customers daily. The National Honor Society will be selling pink ribbons in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. The Mental Health ambassadors have a field trip coming up, where they will meet with local businesses to partner for the Green Bandana Campaign to spread awareness about mental health throughout Gloucester. In sports news, the field hockey, boy soccer, and cross-country and golf team are all off to a strong start. And tonight's a golf senior night. And finally, on October 21st, we have our homecoming game, where it's the football and cheerleaders' senior night.
Does anybody have any questions? Do you know who you're playing on homecoming night?
I'm not sure. I think it could be Sawgast.
And where is the semis this fall?
It's at the prime in North Reading.
All right. Thank you so much for being with us. Enjoy the rest of your night, unless you'd rather stay with us. But we understand you probably have other things to do.
Thank you.
All right. Good night. Thanks. The next item of business is oral communications. If anyone is in attendance and would like to address the committee, I will read the rules for oral communication. The public shall have the opportunity at every school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communication shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the committee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public can address the committee with the permission of the chair. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of their prepared communication to the recording secretary. The school committee chair shall not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. That said, this particular public comment section is not related to the naming of the new school. So that will happen at 7:00 or later, depending upon how our business moves along. So if there's anybody that wants to speak on any other topic. I have a question too, before we go into it. So I just want to confirm, I saw somewhere, either our packet or somewhere, that we were going to allow public comment on the topic of the school attendance zones. Just wanted to make... Correct. Without objection, I think it's good that we hear comments on that topic.
Yeah, I just want to say a couple things before we get into...
Absolutely.
So good evening, everyone. School members, Mayor Verga. Tonight, we have two topics that are very important to our entire school community and many people across the city. That's the first we'll hear, life in open communications. More input from about the proposal, about the school zones, and then also during the public hearing on the school naming. As we begin tonight, I want to share a few... ...tonight, focus on your experience, how great... And this is the school zone specifically, but it also can be applied to naming. Please focus on your own experience, how great your school is, and the impact of change on your family. The school committee and I need to hear this input. It is very helpful for us. It will help in deliberations that happen tonight. At the same time, I urge everyone to refrain from sharing opinions, making claims, or drawing conclusions about schools that aren't yours. The reason I say this is, and I can speak from it, is because I have a perspective, I'm lucky enough to have a perspective that very few people have or are privileged to have. I'm fortunate enough to see and to know all of elementary schools and to see across all of our elementary schools. So most families, staff, and students understandably know their own school well, really well. I get to see all of our elementary schools, and I want to say a few things about that. Thankfully, in Gloucester, for a number of years before I was here, the Gloucester Public Schools, the school committee, Super Tumon and Sapphire, Sims Urent Bach, our school leaders, our elementary school teachers, and our paraprofessionals, our reading math coaches as well, have done the work over the last eight years or so to make sure all of our elementary schools are top-notch. All our elementary schools are very strong schools, where students learn important things every day. We have strong principals and strong teachers at all our elementary schools, and we use a consistent curriculum with a consistent instructional approach across all of our schools. We use a consistent process to assess the progress students are making, and the same process for supporting students who need additional support. All of this has been challenging work that our school staff and leaders have stuck to for many years. Gloucester should be proud of all of that work in all of our elementary schools. Beeman, East Gloucester, Plum Cove, Veterans, and West Parish. I know our families love our elementary schools, and I think we will hear about that tonight. Every single one of our elementary schools are warm and welcoming communities. The staff will embrace each student, love each student, and work very closely with their families. We should be proud of all our schools. I'm looking forward to hearing folks, and it's about folks' schools today. And I hope we can keep that in mind as we do some difficult work together tonight.
Thank you. Excellent introduction. Okay, so we will now start with Jamie Orlando under public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, please. You have up to three minutes for your comments.
Hi. It's actually Joe and Jamie Orlando together. And we are speaking tonight, I guess, in opposition, to an extent, to the proposed rezoning of attendance, rezoning or redistricting plan, which, to our understanding, carries with it a three-year window within which our child, who's currently in the Beeman Memorial School, can stay in that school until he has to move. So we have three children in the district, two in Beeman, a second grader and a kindergartner, and one who's about to enter Gloucester preschool. We've had a great experience so far at Beeman. We, especially in kindergarten with Yvonne LeBlanc and the school adjustment counselor Hillary Randaza, have been wonderful for our children. They've made really good connections with those individuals and the other teachers as well. And all things being equal, we'd like to stay in Beeman because we've had such a wonderful experience there. The reason we did not attend the last school committee meeting is because we had seen a poster circulated, and my understanding is circulated by the Gloucester Public Schools, that said that families with students in the elementary school will be able to stay in their current school. It was a pretty full stop at the end of that sentence at the bottom of the poster. And frankly, it comforted us to the extent that we didn't think we needed to come and advocate in any one direction or the other. Unfortunately, and through no fault of the school committees or the administrations, our kids have been through social and emotional hell the past two and a half years during the COVID pandemic. And there's very little to anything we could have done about that. In fact, I applaud the school committee for keeping our kids in school as often as we did. A lot of cities and towns did not do that. I appreciate that as a parent. So still, there was a lot of ups and downs, a lot of changes, and a lot of difficult things that our children had to go through that frankly, my wife and I did not have to go through when we were children. And while I think kids tend to be resilient, I am concerned about yet another change in their environment, as is Jamie. My wife, Jamie, is a former integrated preschool teacher in the Rockport Public Schools for eight years. She did three years before that in Hamilton-Wentham. Master's degree in special education and is licensed kindergarten through second. I'm a former city councillor, so I know what you all go through every day, and I know it's not easy, and you're trying to strike a balance. But we don't want to come here just with problems. We want to propose solutions for you to consider as well. One of the things that we'd like to see discussed tonight is expanding that three-year period to a five-year period, such that the children who are currently in elementary school can finish their time in the current school that they're in. I understand that would mean that children who are not entered yet into that district would have to start at a different school, but that's a much lesser problem from our perspective as far as the environment that they've been comfortable with. The other potential plan that you could put into place is to designate all of the children who are now, I guess, grandfathered or zoned differently, to be choice students, which would give them the same rights as students who are currently choice students, who will not have to move districts based on the new plan. Our number-one goal is the social, emotional, and educational well-being of our kids. We like to stay in Beeman. We appreciate the time that you've given us. I know I have like five seconds left, so if you'll humor me. It's important to us that we give them as much stability, I think, as possible. That should be our primary goal. So I appreciate your time. Thank you. Shockingly, I'm very long-winded. I'm sure you all knew that. But I appreciate it again, and I hope you'll apply one of those two potential solutions to this problem that we're facing tonight.
Thanks, Jeff. You did perfect on the time. Thank you. Next person is Jessica Silveira. She elevated? She...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, my computer just shut off. I'd like to say thank you for allowing the opportunity to hear our voices in regards to new attendance zones. As I address you today, I do so with several different points of view. I was a Plum Cove parent, a Beeman parent, a Plum Cove employee, and a Beeman employee. I watched the October fifth school committee meeting, and I could not help but be bothered by some of the comments. And I felt I needed to have my voice heard. My daughter is a junior in high school, and her school career began at Plum Cove. She had a wonderful time, and the staff there helped guide her on her way to continue through the Gloucester schools. My son, who is now a freshman, also started at Plum Cove, and again, he had a wonderful experience. When it came to his fifth-grade year, I made a decision to school-choice him to Beeman based on the needs of our family at that time. When making decisions regarding our children, especially ones that will cause major changes, we always put a lot of thought into it and how it will affect them. I can say with confidence that when I made this decision, I did not second-guess myself. I never questioned if it was the right decision or the wrong decision. I knew the staff at Beeman would do their job and provide him with the best education. Staff and students were very accepting and welcomed him into the Beeman community. He never had a problem moving schools at the start of his fifth-grade year. It proved to be a positive experience. He now had a group of new friends. He kept contact with his friends at Plum Cove. And when sixth grade came, he was ready for omelet because he already knew a large number of his classmates. To this day, he has friends from both schools. I am currently a teacher at Beeman Elementary. I have been with the Gloucester Public Schools for 11 years, both as a paraprofessional and a teacher at Plum Cove and Beeman. One of the greatest things about working for the Gloucester Public Schools is that we all work together. We teach the same curriculum, no matter what elementary school you attend. I teach the same math in my third-grade classroom as the third-grade teacher at Plum Cove does in hers. We collaborate on our reading program to make sure students are receiving the same instruction, no matter which schools or classroom students are in, whether it's at Beeman or West Parish. When parents say, "Another half-day?", those are some of the times teachers get together as a grade or a district to improve on our teaching of the curriculum. Teachers at Beeman... Did you stop me?
No.
Sorry. Teachers at Beeman are dedicated, hardworking, caring, and they give all that they can to their students, just as the students at every other elementary school in Gloucester does. As teachers, we all have the same goal, and that is to teach children, no matter what street they live on or the economic status. Here at Beeman, I prepare my students for the MCAS just as every other school in our district does. We support and encourage them. We teach and love them. We embrace what they bring to the classroom. That is just one of the many things that makes Gloucester a great school district. Beeman and Plum Cove are both excellent schools with amazing teachers and students. No matter which school students are zoned for, they will receive a top-quality education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jessica. Next person is Shannon Barowski.
Hi. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Shannon Barowski of 14 Finch Lane, and I am the proud parent of a Beeman Memorial first-grade student. I am present tonight to address my opinion on the rezoning of our Gloucester schools. I apologize that I was not able to speak at the open forum held on October 5. I also hold a position as the math coach of Beeman School. So I had a prior obligation of facilitating our math and focus parent session for the district. I ask that you understand my rationale tonight through my lens as a parent and as a parent only. Let me begin by saying thank you to all of the committee members for your open-minded views on rezoning and acknowledging that we need to do what is best for the future of all of our Gloucester Public School students. Emotions seem to run very high for families, and I believe that opinions and false accusations were put out into the public about Beeman School and our Gloucester Public Schools by families who, by no fault of their own, were either misinformed or ignorant to the consistent pedagogy of the Gloucester Public School system. My daughter goes to school every day with a smile on her face. She is greeted daily by name by all staff members that pass her. She has gained confidence, independence, and a social-emotional strength that I could never teach her at home. The commitment professionalism and content knowledge that Beeman teachers display is commendable. Beeman School's paraprofessionals are always present and engaging with all students. The school secretary and nurse are diligent, professional, and helpful. When my daughter gets school lunch, she is welcomed into the cafeteria with open arms and comforting smiles by the cafeteria staff. Beeman School's adjustment counselors and school psychologists are consistently reaching out to families to offer guidance and support. Mrs. Genotti has supported a safe learning environment for her students and has done an amazing job making my daughter feel a part of the Beeman community. I could write pages of examples in support of these statements, so please reach out if you would like them. As an active member of the Beeman PTO, I say with pride that these parents and caregivers spend countless hours planning and executing fun and engaging events that are accessible to all of Beeman students and surrounding schools, such as trunk-or-treat and skating at the local ice rink. The Beeman PTO president, along with Mrs. Genotti, collaborated for over five years creating a proposal and monitoring the execution of a beautiful new great playground for our school. They have also shared all of their resources and data with other schools to promote equity within the district. I address these highlights because a school should not be labeled just by its MCAS scores or socioeconomic status of its families. A school should be highlighted by educating the whole child. All of Gloucester Public Schools follow the Common Core standards. All of Gloucester Public Elementary Schools teach the same curriculum using the same programs. All of our students are Gloucester Public School students. It breaks my heart to hear families go on a public forum and express false accusations about one of our Gloucester Public Schools. The school that is responsible for educating my child and does an absolutely amazing job at doing so, I understand and respect the passion and fear of requiring children to switch schools. For this, I ask that you take into consideration most families' emotions. Our children do not judge each other based on assessment scores, family diversity, or school zones. It does not matter what school they go to. We must remember that these students will all go to middle and high school together. They are participating in sports, activities, and programs after school and on weekends together. They will all graduate with the same Gloucester High School diploma. I have faith in Superintendent Lummis's rezoning proposal and ask that you do as well. Thank you for your time and patience tonight.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay. I see no other hands up, so that will conclude our public comment. I have two more. Amy Orlando?
Hi, my name's Amy Orlando, and I live at 22 Acacia Street. I'm sure you're probably sick of hearing from me. However, I feel that I have to advocate for my child. Last night, Superintendent Lummis met with the Plum Cove PTO, and I truly appreciate this opportunity to have spoke to him. In this conversation, the question as to where the three-year grandfather idea came from was not answered. Some parents raised the question of why this can't be a five-year plan and allow those students that are established to stay. After hearing from other people, I 100% agree with you that no matter where children go, they will be absolutely welcomed. However, not all children are made for this big transition. Most children that are already settled don't want to leave. And if you ask them that, they'd become upset by that. If school choice is available for their younger siblings that haven't started school yet, give the priority to those children first. And if there isn't truly space, then ask families to make the decision about what is best for their family. As I researched school choice, I came upon the school committee policy about choice students. I was mostly intrigued by this, as there is a policy in place to protect choice students, but not the students that are currently attending their neighborhood school. I found a part of your policy that says, "Once admitted to the school, a child shall be entitled to remain at that school through the grade levels for which the school makes provision, unless the student is removed from misconduct after due process under relevant laws and regulations or the school committee redistricts those students." I question why the rights of school choice students can be protected in this document. However, the families that are facing this rezoning are not. I am assuming the reason why a child shall be entitled to remain at that school through their grade levels for which the school makes provision is due to the fact that it is not in the child's well-being to switch them once they are established and settled. I ask that you consider this when you're making your discussion about rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, and Lindsey Brooks?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much for letting me speak up, and I'll try to be very brief. I just wanted to echo some of the comments that were made by colleagues of mine. I live in Magnolia on Western Ave, so we are actually districted for West Parish. I've been teaching at Beeman for eight years. And when it came time to decide where my children would go to school, I choiced my children to Beeman. My son is actually an accelerated, almost gifted learner, and I knew that his academic and educational needs would be met. On top of that, he has a disability with his social-emotional health. And I know for certain that all of his needs are met, his academic, high-achieving needs, and his underachieving social-emotional needs. As a social-emotional teacher at Beeman, I can appreciate with every ounce of myself the emotions and concerns that the parents have for their children, who may be affected and impacted by this plan. But what I really wanted to comment on was that the opinion that by being moved to Beeman, they would receive a lesser education or a lesser experience really hit me to the core because I see firsthand every day what my colleagues do, the dedication, the hard work, all of their energy that they put forth into, like Shannon said, educating the whole child. And while we may be a diverse community, that's the real world. And I think having our kids be exposed to that sooner rather than later is going to make for a more compassionate adult. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. Next person is CR. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, hi. This is Catherine Lyon, and my address is 17 Hyrope. And I have two questions. Is this a public hearing for the redistricting or is this oral comments?
This is oral comment. We did the public hearing last week. I'm just allowing, we're allowing people to continue to make comments this evening on this topic.
Okay, so I would like to... I've been following the committee meetings all year, and I went back and looked at Ben's slides for the superintendent report for, you know, his goals and tasks. And I've looked at the agendas and the minutes and the newspaper articles for the whole year, and even going back to the decision to have a new consolidated school. And none of these plans does it have redistricting as a task. And I'm just curious why it came up for last week? And is it possible to pause this so that there's a discussion that's more robust throughout the community? And I wholeheartedly agree on the teaching staff at all the schools. That's not what I'm speaking to. But I'm definitely speaking to about communication and reaching out to everybody in the community and making sure everybody has a chance to talk about this. And I think it's important, if it is such an important task for the school committee, that it was included in the, you know... Hang on one second. I mean, there's over 34 slides in Ben's superintendent report. And, you know, at the end, he says, "Let's stay focused." It's very easy to try to do too much or get distracted by new initiatives. This seems like a new initiative. And he also says he really talks about reaching out and talking to more people in the community, including them. I heard disturbing comments in a different way about blaming different groups and different reasons about moving people around. It isn't just about economics that has to do with a person's interest in learning anywhere. And I think it's important that we really address all of the issues that are happening in the schools now with this window. And I don't know where the redistricting is coming up. So is it possible to pause? And if not, can you please describe the steps that are leading you to do this, rather than blaming it, as I've heard in the past, on, you know, our 10 one-specific cultural group? It's really upsetting. And again, I've written only three times to Superintendent Lummis. Have never heard back. And I think it's really important that these neighborhoods are represented on these committees and these decisions. And I do think that there is a lot of uproar almost every six months with another initiative that's very easy to get distracted by. And I think this is right up there with it. So please pause and reflect more with the whole community about the reasons behind this and be mindful of what we're saying about different people throughout the community. And I really do think if it's a mission on your task for the school committee in the district, then it should have been listed on his job PowerPoint that he presented to you guys for the past two years and to the school committee when you have, I mean, to the city council when you have your joint meetings. and to the school committee when you have, I mean, to the city council when you have your joint meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see no other hands. So this, okay, Chelsea Eunice.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My voice has changed. No, just kidding. This is Jim Eunice speaking and the husband of Chelsea Eunice, 103 Gloucester Ave resident, teacher at the Gloucester High School. My apologies for not being more involved and vocal. I am recovering from an injury. So Chelsea has been, she's been doing great. First off, let me just say thank you for all the work that you all have continually done. I know many of you personally and I work for Ben and have been in meetings with him and he works incredibly hard and is very strategic and thoughtful in the things that he does. And I really appreciate all the thought that has gone into this proposal. Let me also say that as a long-term resident of Gloucester with many extensions in the city, we love this community and we believe deeply in the schools, in Gloucester Public Schools, in all schools. And I empathize with the number of staff and community members who have expressed passion for Beeman. I once was a Fuller, was a Fuller kid, for those of you who have been here. And I remember how folks used to think about Fuller. And I can assure you from being a member of this community that all the schools here are there tremendous. I think for us, just personally, you know, I have a son at Plum and he's a second grader, as Chelsea mentioned several times. And we have a third grader in the preschool. He's one more year and then the hope was for him to go to Plum Cove. I think the issue for us is just, is a few, as I know a number of families would empathize. I think it's less about going to Beeman. I think it's more about, one, you know, our sons are very close, Jimmy and Caleb, for those of you who see us at games and in the community. There's, we love Plum Cove. We think Dan has done an excellent job. We love the teachers there, staff. We know many of them personally. Jimmy came into Plum. He was, had a hard time kind of adjusting, as many of our students did. And I saw this at the high school post-pandemic or even during pandemic, and Plum was excellent. And we love the systems there and the people there. And Caleb and Jimmy were really excited about being in school together. I know that Jimmy has the option of moving to Beeman, but given the amount of connection that he's already made in Plum and just kind of him just being a little bit more shy and a little bit more anxious, that wouldn't be a good move for him. So then it's looking like we're sending our kids to two different schools. So I guess our proposal is, can we get a sense, so we're about, as I know you are as well, it's like mitigating discomfort if we can as we roll out this policy. I think this is excellent. I'm absolutely, I agree personally with the rezoning. It's just for us, how do we mitigate the amount of discomfort that all families experience as we shift to it, right? We're in the public forum setting and so we're getting public feedback. We're saying, how can we make this work? I would ask that we just get a sense of what is the, what is the real impact of trying to hold slots for kids? Like how many Beeman families want to stay? How many Plum families want us to keep, they already have a sibling in the school and they have a younger sibling coming up? How many of those are there and is it actually feasible to keep them together? And if not, then that's, then we just have to deal with it. But if you talk to my mom, it might be a little bit challenging because she's dropping currently three, two of my sons and then one of my nephews off at another school. And so the only way that happens is if they all have different times and currently Beeman and Plum have the same time. So if that, if they were to be separate, we would have to figure that out. And we're not like a super fan of bus transportation, even though we know they're awesome too. So just some things to think about. Again, thank you so much for hearing our opinion and our feedback. We'd really appreciate you and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, seeing no more hands, we are concluding the public comment section. Next item of business is recognitions.
Ben and I were at the ribbon cutters today for the Plum Cove Playground, which was really cool. I was very nervous watching those kids climbing that rope Michael tower. They're much braver than I, but none of them seemed shaken by it. But I'll hand it over to Ben to give any more background on that. It was a great time.
Oh, I said to a few folks today, I could do ribbon cuttings at playgrounds all day long, every day. It was really just a wonderful moment for the whole school community at Plum Cove. Principal Dan Jewell organized it very, very well. So we had a student reach grade plus a few older folks, my son, Bert, and Gary Fisher, CFO, all involved in cutting. At the same time, the rest of the school, all the students were out there as well to witness it. And then afterward, and also the PTO members who helped design it, as well as some of the teachers were of course there. And then after the ribbon cutting, the kids could get popsicles, which are donated by the PTO, and go play in the playground. And it all handled, everyone handled it very, very well, except for me and Mr. Berger. We're a little nervous and out of our element, but no, it was a wonderful day, lots of smiles, lots of appreciation for so many people who've done a lot of things here and really looking forward to having the same type of scene in a month and a half or so at Beeman when we have their new playgrounds installed. At this point, for Beeman, the equipment is scheduled to arrive on December 1st. We're going to hold it that way, we hope. But this playground at Plum Cove took 19 days to install, so they're only without a playground for 19 days. And so it was a great job all around and then just a great to have them a modern, safe, inside playground. So great day, great morning.
So I myself was not able to attend the Math Focus program for parents put on by the math, which is what the husband was. And he just had so many good things to say about it. He wishes he could put that. Tell members who will relearn math. I think we all do. So I just, I just want to say, you know, to echo sort of that in the spirit of, you know, our schools are all doing very similar, very important work. That was shown through this program and I hope parents are able to take advantage of it. If not, I think it was recorded and will be available for folks to take advantage of it just to sort of teach us what's happening in math in our schools. So bravo and thank you for putting it up to Math Focus.
I'm just, I just want to recognize, I'm really happy that field trips are now a thing again after all we've been through. My son went on a field trip today to the Maritime Museum from West Parish and he had a great time. And I actually stopped in at school today and wanted to also recognize our community partners, Kipan and Safin's Bank, who are initiating savings accounts with our students. I think it began at fourth grade and up. So I just want to recognize that as well. A lot of people lined up for that this morning. A lot of students, it is.
Excellent. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? I would just note that we didn't have any transfers or requests. It's not been listed to remove for this state. I just wanted to clarify that we're not approving any of our loans to you. Did you catch that?
I just would love just to hear what the 225 pieces of donation, just some more information on that.
Sorry, I was talking.
The donation from Energy North Group of clothing, you know.
I do not do. We will do a better job of making sure that, especially items like that where folks are donating and stuff, that will give you an update and we'll give you more details the next week.
Move it, we will move the consent agenda. We will vote, please.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Hey, Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Minia?
Yes.
Okay. We are now moving on to the public hearing. Item on the agenda regarding the naming of the wonderful new school. And we will have an introduction.
Yeah, we have a short introduction, yep. Just so those folks who haven't been able to tune in because they have busy lives, presentations to get folks sort of to committee, just to place us where we are in the process. So we're continuing on naming that school. And this, at this point, it's in the school committee's hands. Just to remind folks of our intention of the process, which started really sort of in January, February. Be inclusive, so provide rumors, opportunities for students and families and community members to participate in and provide during the process. We continue that tonight for the public hearing. Be transparent, make sure the community is well aware of the naming process. The process is followed as approved by committee. The communication helps to inform, include, engage community members. Recognize and support the core values of each school community and the coming together of two school communities. We want from the beginning to have students from both schools deeply involved in the process. And so that has happened and it's wonderful. And then as policy states, the school makes the final decision on the naming, so we're moving forward with that. Just so folks know the process and timeline so far and what we've been through and done, December 2021, so almost a year ago, the school committee approved the naming process. In February 2022, the nominations committee with students and staff and the school leaders was created. April 2022, nominations outreach to the community in a variety of ways. And that resulted in 71 nominations submitted by community members and 51 separate names submitted. June and August, the nominations committee with the students reviewed all the nominations and identified 10 semi-finalists. And those were announced in late August. And then in August and September, got nearly 600 people provided input online and at our naming night for the student nominations committee to consider, which they did. And on September 14th, they came forward with the four finalists. Here are the final four. East Veterans Elementary School, First Light Elementary School, Fisherman's Memorial Elementary School, and Seaside Elementary School. I'm just going to go through these, just to show them, not to go through them, but these slides that the students presented about a month ago. One on each school, here's Seaside Elementary School and sort of how the students summarized it. First Light Elementary School, again, I'm not going to read these off to you, but you've seen them before. And just want to make sure other folks who are watching see them as well. And these were a combination of the student thoughts, but also sort of, you know, a selection of the comments that came in through the online forum and through the naming night about each of these names. And then students just wanted to give the committee and the general public a sense of what those comments were. Fisherman's Memorial Elementary School. And then East Veterans Elementary School as well. So again, just a compilation of sort of a few selections by the students of comments that came in from community members about each school name. And then from here, the process and timeline, so tonight in yellow, the public hearing and school committee meeting, community members can speak directly to the school committee members to give input on the four finalists. And then at this point, the school committee is scheduled to deliberate and make a final decision two weeks from now on October 26th. So just having said that, I'll remind folks, just in terms of a public hearing and how that works, that designed to give the public, after you speak directly to the school committee and also Superintendent, but we typically do not respond to questions, answer questions or deliberate about them. You'll do that at your next meeting and answer questions, provide more information then. So, but certainly glad to hear whoever wants to speak up about the finalists.
Okay. All right. So we will open the public hearing. If anybody would like to make comments, we know there's been a lot of forums and avenues for people to provide feedback, but we would love to hear from people that would like to speak to us this evening. Mary Ann.
Hello, Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Month Pleasant Avenue. I want to thank the children. The children did a fine job with the task at hand. I applaud all of them for their hard work and dedication, for their time and effort, thought and consideration. But I must say that many adults feel that they could not speak up as they would never want to send any negative messaging to the children, and they shouldn't. Children depend on each of us to help them further their education and to be able to work together for the best interest of all of them. There are some strong feelings regarding the property and its history. With that being said, I feel that the only name that represents both schools coming together, that's because of what you want to achieve, and still honors what the land has represented since 1935, is East Veterans. While the others are nice, Seaside is the name of a local cemetery and other businesses already here in Gloucester. Seaside Legal, owned by a past school committee member, Seaside Glass, Seaside Graphics, and many more. We already have the Fisherman's Memorial on Stacy Boulevard. When people think of Fisherman's Memorial, they think of the boulevard. That is the place where we all gather together to memorialize and remember each of the fishermen currently at sea or the ones who lost their lives to the sea. First Light has already been said to be named after the first set of lights when coming into Gloucester. We know that that is not the reason that name was chosen, but there again, there are businesses already with that name. First Light Anglers, First Light Photography, et cetera. While the past school committee members voted not to name the school after a person, East Veterans still honors the legacy of Private Joseph S. Meadows Jr. and all of the men and women who unselfishly gave some or gave all for each of our freedoms today. I can't imagine the school being named anything else but what that land has represented for many, many years. Again, to the children, thank you for your hard work. And I just want, the children should learn about the land and why it was named after a fallen hero, why it was dedicated in Private Joseph Meadows' honor. Let us teach our children to honor and respect these brave men and women to the highest degree, all who represented Gloucester. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next person is Robin Town. Robin, you have to unmute.
Robin, can you unmute?
Robin, it still looks like your device is muted.
Robin, if you are talking, we can't hear you. You need to unmute your device. We're going to, Maria. Stick sure. I dropped off.
Check it later.
Okay.
Um.
Should we log back in?
Okay, she'll come back in. We'll give her some time to come back in. In the meantime, does anybody else want to speak? We'll give Robin a few minutes, a minute to.
Oh, wait, Robin, can I ask you a process question?
Sure.
So it's not a final vote. So I don't even vision, just going to say, start with the first one. Does it give the majority vote, the second one?
I think we should do a whole.
It looks like, sorry, sorry, don't take Robin down.
Okay, Robin, let's try you again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Very well.
All right, sorry for the technical difficulties and sorry for my voice. I have a wonderful cold. I just wanted to, oh, Robin Town, 12 Links Road. I am the PTO president, co-president of East Gloucester School. I wanted to thank the past and present kids for doing such an awesome job. It was not an easy task with such strong public opinions. And I think they did a good job narrowing down the names. I don't know who's aware, but we've been working already this year to bring the two PTOs together. We're doing fundraising together, a couple of family fun events like trunk or treat, and we're gonna do a spring event together with them. While we're joining our two communities together this year, we're also focusing on creating a new school community next year. And I feel like a brand new name without East Gloucester or veterans in it is the best way to do that. I personally prefer Seaside Elementary School. It matches our beautiful seaside town. It looks great on swag, which is a PTO dream. And it matches the logo idea that we want to use for our swag and for the new school. And it's not uncommon to name a playground after something different than a school. I know at East Gloucester, for instance, our playground is named something different than our school. And I think the best way to recognize veterans is by naming the playground of the new school, Veterans Memorial, or something like that. So it's not dissing the veterans, but we also get a brand new name to celebrate our new school community. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. I see no more hands raised. So this will conclude the public hearing on the name. We look forward to two weeks from now. It might be very easy. So what was suggested to me is maybe have everybody write down on a piece of paper their first, second, third, fourth choice in the rank order. And that way, see if there's consensus around the first or second choice.
Good idea, okay. So sort of a secret ballot and then public ballot. So nobody's.
Well, I don't care, yeah, they can be handed, they can be handed to Maria.
Yeah.
Okay, and she can do the tallying.
Yeah.
And that will, I think, be the best way to kick off the discussion.
I think it works.
There's consensus around a couple of names. I just want to comment, I think that's a great idea, it's a straw poll vote. And when I was at Essex Tech, we did that for hiring a superintendent, and it worked out fantastic. You know, because there was no pressure, there was no deliberation beforehand, so the name rose. And then there was the deliberation, so instead of arguing and trying to convince each other of a different name if we're not in agreement, this kind of raises the, raises the name and then discuss it. So I think it's an excellent idea.
Or if you have my text, my cell phone number, you can text me your choices.
Does that work? Okay.
This is a two weeks, it's two weeks.
Oh, I thought it was now. I'm sorry. Never mind.
Not yet. Within like two weeks. Okay. All set on that topic? Okay. Principal Fusco for being here.
Thanks, Fusco. Nice to see you, visit.
Nice chatting with you.
All right. So we will move on to deliberations on educational issues and superintendent's report.
Great, so the first item is discussion deliberation on school attendance zones.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna give a quick review of the, my recognition, my recommendation proposal. The school committee then will discuss and deliberate, and I consider the input that they've gotten in a whole variety of ways. But I want to just go through where we are in terms of the proposal that was shared originally, I think, a month ago. And then it was discussed at the public hearing. So everyone who's tuning in now just has the same information. So let me jump in, share this presentation. And then we have a little bit more information, which the committee asked for last time. Again, the impetus for this is the opening of the new school. The new school with the zones of East Gloucester and Veterans. Those two zones combined would not create enough students for the new school. And if the size is at 440 students, which it's been built at, you know, it's been built as and we committed to accommodating. The process has been under, for a while now. Everybody shared the criteria in June, and then a number of meetings since then. The presentation a month ago for proposed update, recommended update, school committee. And I'll also talk about, you know, engaging parents and families since then as well in a moment. Just a limited number of changes in terms of, they're not, a limited number doesn't mean they're not impactful for families, okay? Results in a variety of things, more sensible and contiguous school attendance zones, probably the most sensible ones or the most sort of straightforward ones, I think Gloucester's had in quite some time. Utilizing new skill, school building fully, which is really essential in terms of the investment the whole community's put into it. And that'll happen over a number of years, you know, that doesn't, whenever you open a new school building, it takes a little while to get into capacity. And, but we need to create a school zone that can actually get into capacity and to existing ones would not. Again, impacting few as possible people, so trying to, as we're going about this, trying not to make too many changes. Again, even making a few changes impacts, you know, individual families or families in significant ways. And we've always tried to honor that and respect that. It does reduce length of bus rides, longest bus rides for Beeman Plum Cove families. Helps balance socioeconomic, helps the socioeconomic balance across schools significantly. That's something that Gloucester has not had for a very long time. If everyone knows, it's hard for diverse communities like Gloucester to get a better balance. And we're able to do that with the proposal of the new zones. And then also, from the beginning, try to reduce the impact, the immediate impact on our families. That's why we, I propose a three-year timeframe to fully enact the new attendance zones. And that means that folks wouldn't be required to move in the short term. And we'll talk more about that in a moment. So just in terms of the criteria, just to show this to folks, but just as a reminder to folks who may be just tuning in for the first time, maximizing all the new school building was, are really sort of the impetus behind this. Wanted to maintain small class sizes and sort of see where we can balance that, where there are larger class sizes in some schools rather than others, but maintain the small class sizes, which we will certainly do. Wanted to improve the current zones by making sure the new ones were contiguous geographically. Mentioned lessening socioeconomic disproportionality. And then a few things about getting to school, so transportation, make sure that can still be done in an efficient way. Because buses are always, it's hard for folks to know this, but buses are always, they're very complicated. The most complicated, one of the most complicating factors in any school district, including hours. And then making sure we have some growth for future developments. And then again, minimize the impact on, the immediate impact on families by grandfathering as well. So I think I've done pretty well on that. And the school committee can certainly, you know, discuss and recommend tweaks that, you know, we can, we can think, consider and work on. Just for folks, for folks to know, with the three-year transition as proposed means, is that that would begin a year from now. Any students in second grade now or higher with this proposal would complete elementary school. Transportation provided in the currently existing zones to the current school for three years. That's really an essential piece in terms of transportation, because we want to make sure that any approach or process we create can be equitably, equitable to all families. I'll talk more about that in a little bit. In terms of the proposed, what's the committee considering tonight? Is that those families with students kindergarten, first grade, and or young will have up to three years to transition to their own school. And we work with families to understand when the best time for them to transition would be. So just a lot of work, I won't go through, but just to see that, and for you folks to know, they've been working up, looking at a lot of variety, piece of data here, information, history, you know, even including development. And, you know, proposed development in the city to understand where we might have growth, that sort of thing. Communication outreach around the school committee meetings in the summertime and then recently in the school time. Have met with, met with PTO principals and then done a lot of outreach since the proposal was finalized and made public with parent leaders groups, I met with them twice, including today. Emailed, contacted by families that are aware about it. Reached out to families on the impacted, impacted streets to make sure they knew about the proposal and the public hearing. You know, the outreach that our families, English learners, to make sure they understood what live on the impacted streets. And so social media, Facebook, Gloucester Times. Then, and I've also met, I met directly with the Beeman Plum Cove PTO, because those are obviously the schools that are most impacted. So we've been trying to do quite a bit of outreach, to really, really good about the conversation and the input, whether it's through the public hearing or whether it's through electronic means or email or just face to face or across Zoom. So I've got a lot of input since the proposal was first, suggestions. The public forum, so last time where there was a, last time we met, there were 21 responses, now there are 32 responses, all told on the, on the forum. And they range from different schools and, you know, but we've also have followed up all these folks. Most of the folks who responded to the, to the public forum also have heard through email or through public hearing, which is helpful. But anyone who asks for follow-up, either the principal, the superintendent, myself, or communication coordinator, followed up with an email or a phone call to speak directly to folks and answer their questions. So let me just go through the proposal here. Again, trying to move from just a, it's not a great graphic on the left, but a sort of messy and more disconnected zones to the ones on the right, which are more connected. I'll show the zones in a second, that's helpful to the committee. Four areas are impacted, so the Beeman zone is furthest away from the school, it's downtown around the beginning of Washington Street. The Plum Cove zone is furthest away from the school at Centennial Avenue. And, and, and around, and I should say Gloucester. The Gloucester, sorry about that. We are points, we're from Beeman to Plum Cove in the downtown around the beginning of Washington Street. So the three-year transition, what that means in terms of just what we proposed so far and working from. I discussed that already. And then here's the new information, wanted to make sure folks understood exactly the number of families impacted. This is very important and I hope will be helpful. You can see, so we have on the left-hand side Beeman students, on the right-hand side Plum Cove students. It starts in the left-hand column of the Beeman current enrollment, this enrollment by grade. So for example, 45 students in kindergarten, 56 students in grade three, okay? And then, and then a number of students of those, of the total enrollment in any given grade will be eligible to move or will be in the new zone from Beeman and switching from Beeman to Plum Cove. That's eight of the 45, and then Beeman to EGAS vets, four of the 45. A total of 12, okay? While 12 isn't a big number, it is, it's not a small impact for that particular grade, okay? About a quarter, okay? And similar to the next grade, and 12 from Beeman to Plum Cove out of 58, and then seven from Beeman to EGAS vets, again, that's 19 out of 58, about 30%, 33% or so. Significant, not a, not a large number, but a significant impact on that, on the school, but also on the, those individuals, families, obviously. The other grades are in green, because as, as you know from the proposal, those folks would, don't need to move if they want, if they want to stay. They're not, they're not necessarily impacted unless they choose to be, okay? And then at Plum Cove, just a similar approach here, 18 total in the kindergarten at Plum Cove right now. Four of those 18 students would be potentially impacted, because they're in the, they'd be in the new Beeman zone. And then a more significant impact at first grade of the 43 total students there, 13 of them, about 30%, a little less than 30%, perhaps, would be impacted as well. So, so again, just want to make sure folks are really clear with the numbers we're talking about. Why these are, you know, again, again, in terms of, in terms of, you know, what we try to do is limit the number of total students across the city and across, while we did a good job with that, it still means that these two schools are impacted and also obviously any given families as well. So all the total numbers across this district are not very large, they certainly are within the schools. And so then the last piece here, just before the committee begins its discussion, is really, I think, a couple of things. Our job, of course, and my job and your job is to think across the whole city and also think long-term, okay? And so we need to think about that. But the other piece is that, two things, is that we really, I just urge you to, for us to work together, an approach that can actually be in line. And to me, that means that it's pretty straightforward, it can be carried out over time. A process, or it's overly complex or cumbersome or extended or assuming exceptions will really cause part of confusion also among families, especially new families, but also be difficult to follow through on effectively and also consistently. Which leads me to the next piece, which I think is very important, is that really that, I, I think it's paramount that we create an approach that's equitable for all families, okay, or impacted. An example of that is just in the proposal right now, is why we want to offer transportation to any family who's in their current zone who continues that school. You know, it's, I guess we want to guard against an effort that, I guess we move another way saying, we want to make sure, to ensure that all families can participate in whatever decision we make together, regardless of their ability to transport, their access to employment or housing, you know, the language to speak at home or access to, you know, to us or to other needs. So that's super important, I think, I mean, it's three personally, but I think in terms of an approach across the whole entire city is essential. So just, I just urge you to keep those two pieces in mind, you can actually input it, in that we can come up with a solution that, that's equitable for all families and effectively. I think that's, so I have other things to show, if you, you know, just to, if people have questions, I might help answer questions, but I'll stop there. Support the committee, your discussion deliberation and answer any questions.
I have a question. Good process, yeah. And I may have missed it somewhere, is there a slide or was there a discussion about what the intention of class sizes is to be to get to East Gloucester veterans?
Yeah, so, so that.
I, I looked through, I couldn't find it.
There was originally, if there was, some of the data we showed. And so it's built at 440 students, I mean, it's intended at 440 students, okay? For, again, if you had a 480 student school there, that'd be 20 students per classroom, if it's less than that, I don't know the exact math, but if you do 440.
So, but my question is a little bit digging deeper into that. And the answer may be no, and that's okay. Because I, I saw the detail that went into the press that you put out.
Yeah, yeah.
And I was kind of looking for something to find out. Okay, so I understand the class size is estimated to be 20 per class. But by doing this, like first year or open day of this school, if we do redistrict, this is what the class size looks like. Or if we don't rezone, this is what the class size would look like. I didn't know if that information was available.
It's, it is, I showed, I showed it early on, but I'll, I'll just sort of talk through, okay? Which is in terms of the projections we did, both on last year's enrollment, looking at the new zones, okay? Or just using their births, okay, and where they lived when they were born. And, you know, doesn't, doesn't map out directly because things change over time, okay? Both those show that schools would be, you know, 18 per class or fewer, okay? You know, we have bubble classes always, where it might go to 2021, but nowhere is there an average of a 20 point per class.
And that's before we rezone?
No, that's after, that's after the update.
Okay, so I'm trying to dig a little further, trying to figure out what it was. I mean, I understand that the new school triggered our policy to have this conversation, right? For those out there that think we just dreamed up that we were gonna do this in the last couple of months. It's actually that policy and opening a new school that triggered this conversation. But I just didn't know if that information was available, like if, if you stuck to what we currently have, what do the class sizes look like when we, day one of school?
Oh, 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 I, I can, we can work that out while we're sitting here, if, you know. But because we know exactly how many kids are in each, in each classroom at, at East Gloucester vets.
Kind of what it is now.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what we do.
Do we have that anywhere?
Yeah, I mean, we, I just, I, we, I, I have it.
All right. I would like to see it at some point, it's important to me, but I don't.
We might actually be able to.
Probably 16.
16?
Students, four classrooms per grade, six grades.
That's if you're at 440, but if.
40 would be 18.
Would be 18, I think, but, but.
Current, 24, you're asking what current enrollment is.
Right.
Well, right, so in other words, if we open the, when we open the new school in September.
Yeah.
If we didn't do any of this work, what do the class sizes look like? That's the information I was looking for.
If, as folks keep talking, we can.
And, and if you can't get it to me tonight, that's okay, but just know that.
Yeah, no.
I would like to see that at some point. So also the background on the MSBA enrollment.
So also the background on the MSBA enrollment. Projection has to do with how many students and children, um. Go into that data and then they do the MSBA touch on projecting enrollment. Um, so similar to West Parish where West Parish, um, had an enrollment number of X. That. X is not X kids per grade in terms of how they set their enrollment. They set their enrollment to, um. Both for size, but also for, um, furniture fixtures and equipment and technology reimbursement as well. Um, so that's kind of the target enrollment, even though with those numbers. The enrollment maybe may justify that third classroom. Right? That, um, but maybe not 20 kids per class, but it's too many to have two classrooms. So that is similar to. Um, the 440 being the target enrollment at East Gloucester for the new students.
And what is the current enrollment to the two schools? Uh, East Gloucester veterans? 380, right?
The tribute. Is it in there somewhere?
Yeah, I think that number's in.
I remember seeing the data.
Yeah. So I can, yeah. So, so you're, you're right. It's, it's the enrollment combined is 383 or so.
Okay.
Okay. And, and you're, you're right, guys, that divided by 24 classrooms, you're at, at an hour of 16.
So it's 380 now and it was when we, the number was 340?
440.
I mean, 440.
It's built.
Right. So what about 60 students?
Would that much of the amount down? Since we applied to. Go to school. Rollments go, go down both schools.
And, and, and the commitment you're making in terms of number of things is that the, the school is built for that enrollment. And I, you know, I, I think it's, or again, 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 it doesn't happen, a school doesn't get fully enrolled at first year it opens. Okay. It takes some time to, a few years at least. Um, but in terms of the, the, that facility, I think it makes most sense to fully utilize it. Fully utilizing it, you know, by one measure is the, um, that projected enrollment for.
Just doing some quick math here. So the current enrollment at East Gloucester, I mean, I'm sorry. Plumco and veterans is 3, 382? Is that what I'm reading?
East Gloucester veterans?
I'm sorry. East Gloucester and. I'm sorry. No, skip it. I made a mistake. Sorry.
I, I have a similar question about the downtown area, um, closest to the new school, you know, that one little square downtown.
Yeah, that you, uh, what you mean that's being changed.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's, I'm wondering what the student body, I mean, we barely talked about that. Is that automatically, um, they're going to get new schools?
Yeah, it's the same process in terms of transition. So, you know, you're aware.
So, so we, uh, I mean, we've been talking so much about Beeman and.
Yes.
Switching rules with Beeman and Plumco.
Yeah. So, so same process, same, you know, process in the transition period, that sort of thing. If they want to move sooner, they can. Um, there is, there isn't, there's less concern there in terms of enrollment, just because you know the new school can fit that.
Yeah. That's what I was wondering. Like what is that student body there, uh, going from, what is it moving to?
East Gloucester vets. Yeah, yeah. I, I understand the question. What is the student body?
I mean, like, how many of those students would be, say, asked to transition to?
Yeah. So, so I, I can try to, again, I, I totally, let me pull it up here a moment. Yeah, I just, I just shared that with you tonight. Let me get to it again.
I'm, I'm wondering if that, that body alone would, how much would that bring up the student body in the new school?
Uh, one second. So, uh, remember it's going forward. Okay. Um, but here, just in terms of, if, if all these students move, for example, which we don't expect. Okay? But it's, you know, one of the 20, uh, plus 29, you know.
15.
Oh, no, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, yeah, okay. That's.
But the other piece is we do know that that neighborhood, um, is particularly dense in births. So we're also looking forward as well. Okay? So, yeah, so that, that's sort of the first step. That's, that's the, that's the step. 35 of those upper grades new. Yeah. But again, um, right. And so, but again, they have the same approach of whether they move or not. Um, sometimes when new building folks are, are, are like to move, sometimes they don't. It's, you know, just, it's up to the family.
At the risk of being repetitive, Ben, what is the, uh, what is the optimum number of students at Plumco? Do we know? I mean, what is it?
There's no.
There's no optimum. I mean, if it's 20 kids per class.
Oh, yeah. So and, and at 240.
240.
Because it's their 12 cla- 12 classrooms.
Yeah.
You know, so you think that, you know, but, but Plumco hasn't been at 240 for a, a, for a while.
Okay.
In the current moment, if, 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 you know, I'm concerned even, even the past 10 years. And if we don't project that, um, in the two ways we do, look at prediction, we, we expect that it would stay at a similar size.
Okay.
Not, not that, you know, none of the schools are going, and we showed this to you a month ago, 220 per class.
Yeah.
We don't expect that. There'll be some times where you have class that are 20, but across, across a full school average. We don't, we don't expect them to be, uh, you know, 20 or not now.
Okay. Um, so that was obviously a bit distracted the last couple of meetings, but I did watch the last meeting because it was fellow Karen and. Can't participate, vote if you don't watch the, the meeting. So I did. Um, I was a, a bit surprised to see that what, that screenshot I sent you guys earlier about anybody in the school now. Can stay till the end had changed to the three-year thing. But one of the questions asked at the meeting, I don't recall which parent or who asked it, was about how many of the siblings. Would have been in that, sorry, your three years are up, you've got to move. And then the other question was asked about preschool and, you know, we were saying we don't want to be able to answer based on our preschool. Do we have those numbers yet?
You want to run siblings?
Okay. So that, that's the big thing. I just liked it. Are we talking, uh, 75 families, 15 families, three families? How many have like the, the kids in kindergarten that's, would be asked to leave in.
Three years.
You want to know the kindergarten in first grade?
Yes. Yeah. And, and then that second piece of info, which we said, we don't want for preschool. We only know what we have at ours, that this Gloucester preschool. So, uh, that's just info we'd like to, I'd like to see as well.
So, so I think we can, uh, it's not a, it's not a perfect, there's no perfect way to get those numbers. Um, because we have to rely on just families responding, which, you know, some, many will, some may not. Just, I want to be clear, we're talking 43 kids total across both schools impacted completely. So, so I'm not saying that's not a small number. I'm not saying, we're saying, you're talking about 75 families. It's nowhere near.
Right.
Can't, can't possibly. Okay. But we, I think we can find that in a fresh shot. Just it will be perfect information will be what, what we gather. Um, you know.
I just have a question to the chair. Do you have a question about this? So.
Yeah, Laura's.
Oh, Laura, sorry. Oh, sorry, Laura.
That's okay. That's what I get for being on Zoom. Um, uh, just. You know, it's come up a lot and I just sort of want to, um, talk this out a little bit. Um, I know there's no perfect number of years for a grandfather period. Um, or that's my, that's my assumption. Um, I'm wondering about, I'm wondering about the idea of five years. I'm wondering about the idea of being able. For a kindergartner today to be able to complete their years in their elementary school. Um, I know that that creates, you know, more pressure on transportation and I know that it doesn't completely solve anything because there could be a preschooler right behind. Um. But I do want to sort of, I'd love to talk through a little bit about what that would mean for this plan to go from the three years to the five and how that would look in planning for the administration.
Well, yeah, because I think it's a good segue into what I was going to ask you. And I didn't, I was going to say the same thing to Laura.
Right. Okay.
So, so this is awesome. So my question to the chair is how, how do you want to run this conversation, right? Because I think a lot of us have a lot to say about different parts of this proposal. And I'm just curious how we're going to put it out there. And I say that because, so Laura brought up the five-year plan and as I'm talking to you right now, she's agreeing, right? And so I wrote down different topics that I would like to have discussions on before we make decisions. Um, and, and to the superintendent, I also want to say, I know, um, you put a, a proposal that makes sense before us as far as boundaries. I don't agree with the time period, but that's another conversation to have. Um. But I, I really want to hear from us to see, you might find a majority of us are on the same page and there's no reason to, to feel like we're not. In that way, we can focus on, um, different aspects of how this can play out. And I know you wanted an easy plan and a quick plan.
Well, I'm going to say those words.
I can guarantee you.
There's nothing about this sentence easy.
Well, I mean, something simple, I think, is the word.
No, no, no. I just be clear. I said that we can actually execute well.
But you've got to remember, this is the Gloucester School Committee. We're dealing with very passionate families. We're hetero-represented families.
Full confidence.
So I can assure you, it's probably not going to be as simple as you would want it to be, but I think we can resolve a lot of issues, Karen. Because I think we're all feeling the same pulls and tucks. Right? So how do we do that?
Maybe, maybe we can, we can, I'm sure we've all made bullet points that we want to discuss and just put it on the line and do that.
Okay. So how about the first one being the five-year?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and how we, you want to say how we feel about it? What questions we need answered to, to be comfortable about it? I know I've heard from, um, a lot of families, regardless of where they're currently in school, that that transition is painful for them. Um, for their kids that have already started in the school. So I, um. So I would be supportive of asking the superintendent to look at that and see if that is a. Non-starter, but hopefully it's not. I, um, so I'm hearing. That's how I'm feeling on five years, that I think five years of kids that started in the schools that, um.
So do you think we should each say how we feel? Like I'm trying to put organization that's, do you want to say something?
No, I just think Bill.
Okay.
No, no, I, I, I agree with you. I mean, there's a lot to say. I think. The interest of time, we, we should kind of go down the line, say, what do we think about the five-year and move on to the next.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think the five-year is, is the way to go. But, you know, we, we have to sort of say. This is the year as opposed to, well, but if you keep going to kindergarten next year, or you have a three or two years, you know. We're elected to make the, the not so sexy decisions. And I think five is, because it's, it's consistent with what we've always had for school choice. If you, you know, you're in the school, you're there for the duration. So it seems kind of, uh, kind of proactive to say, but if you live in the district, you, you got to go.
Are we going, no, the mayor's broken the ice? Maybe we'll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anytime.
Um, totally agree with, I think we should look at the five-year. I, I agree with Ben Erga that. We could extrapolate this out and say, well, you know, it's very, you know, it's very. That kid that is two months old, because your children went to Plumco five years ago, they'll be able to go there. I don't think that's a good idea. I think we, we make it firm in five years and, uh, and wait at that. If, if it's, if the superintendent comes back to us and says, we can do it.
Um, agreed. I would say the five years is, is starting, you know, if you're a kindergartner, you can go show your five years. Your school, um, again, maybe it's something that the district can do, especially in terms of transportation. Um, I know that that will throw hurt balls at people with siblings, but I think that's another bullet that we can discuss.
I think I said mine, that I'm supportive of the five years.
Um, so I am definitely supportive of at least five years. Um, I think keeping the siblings together is a priority. Um, I also understand and respect the fact that we do need a cutoff date at some point. And I think a five-year plan gives families plenty of time to plan for that. Um, I don't believe in taking kindergartners and first graders out of their school. I know kids are resilient. And they probably would rebound very well. However, I just think all that's gone on in the world in the past couple of years. Why do we have to put that pressure on them or take that chance that it may not be the proper decision for a kindergarten or a first grade? Um, so five years, I think is a good plan with a start date that effective as, I mean, I, we can come up with that date. Um, but then like Sam just said, I'd like to talk about school choice and abilities after that. But that's another topic.
Um, I, I think I agree with the, the. In lateening, the, uh, grandfathering period or the five-year period. Uh, but I have other issues. I don't think anyone's.
Well, let's finish this one first. Yeah. Okay. Laura?
Um, thanks. So I just wanted to say, um, yeah, I, I'd love to look at five years and I also realize it's not going to solve everything. Um, there are going to be, you know, families that have a third grader and a kindergartner and a preschooler. Um, and, uh, so I, so I guess I want to say like, I, I think looking at five years and how we could, um, make that happen and really, uh, institute that is a good question. While just knowing and observing that it's not going to, it's not going to solve everything for every family, but I think it would. Um, I, I would hope that it could get us a little further in, as Moses said, having families prepare, uh, letting kids continue in the school that they're in. And then giving families choices if they do want to leave earlier. Um, you know, I, I hope it could work both ways. It may be a little more complicated that way, but I would hope it, it could work both ways.
So if you do some thinking to make sure that.
Sure.
Nothing blows up.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I mean, we haven't checked. I have not had the current Lori Francis, um, director of education. I, 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 I think it's something that can certainly be done. I don't see any from where I sit, what we're thinking about, working on a, um. Did you want to double check though? You know, because I think that makes sense to do that. Be extra, special, extra sure about it, but, uh, it's, yeah, that's, thank you. It's helpful.
Can we talk about an effective date, a start date? Yes, go ahead. Um, so I know the intention is for this to be for the next school year. Um, as far as agreeing where the boundaries are, the new boundaries are. Um, but I just want to, I throw up a, a conversation or a topic about, um. I'm very curious to see if we do not mandate any changes for next year. Um, that, how it will work naturally. In other words. Having the new school, and I'm, I'm looking at all the numbers, which is why I asked you what the numbers would be for the class, because I'm looking at low numbers in Plumco and I'm trying to understand. Where equity is as, as far as class sizes are. I, I think one part of equity and opportunity is allowing. Families to choice in using our intra-district policy to go to the new school if they choose that. In other words, it could be someone that's in West Parish that may want to change to. East Gloucester veterans. And I'm curious to see what would happen in the community, knowing the school's open and if there would be a lot of choice in from directions that we didn't think of. And so therefore, while I understand we need a, an effective date as far as when these changes will go in place. I personally feel very strongly that the first year of the school being open should just happen. And let's see how it flows and how it works and then add kids after that year.
Good. So my concern, I think, just in general with our intra-district choice is that it creates. Just inequity across the board because it relies on parents being able to transport their kids. And so for the families who cannot transport their kids and they're relying on buses, they don't actually get that choice. And so I do have a concern sort of. Continuing to encourage that practice, knowing that not every family has equal access to my choice in our district. I just want to throw that out there as we continue that conversation.
Historical press, uh, uh, perspective here. So in 2008, when I was in school, maybe we closed all the schools. And we made a conscious decision not to redistrict. What we said is, all the kids, we're just going to spread you, we can fit you. And the result is that, you know, buckshot, um, districting we have now. And then you look at, compare that craziness to Ben's layout of, you know, obvious distribution of the kids. Though that I know 15 years later, I'd be here. But, um.
It's because you did it that way.
But we know that someday, uh, that at least by today's thinking, harm in Beeman will become one school. I don't want to leave another flaming getback clue for the next school committee in, in a decade. You know, so we're going to have to bite the bullet. Um, but that's why I'm thinking this five years is compromised to sort of make it, um. Less painful, you know, we're going to do the most good for the most people. We're not going to do the, the most good for everybody. You know, so that's why. I would, I would sort of urge against giving even another year. If we do the five-year grade following phase in, uh, I think that's, that's half the battle. Uh, but the more we kick the can down the road incrementally, it's just going to result in, I don't want to say chaos, but just problems for a future school. but just problems for a future school committee doing it. And some of us might be hesitant about it. You know, I, I understand that, that the map looks horrible, right? As, as like, you know, there's Maplewood going this way and Wheeler's going that way. But, you know, as I understand it, the reason for redistricting is because of the new school. So I would like to limit our redistricting to fulfilling the school, not, not addressing social, economic equity. We should be teaching our kids to our utmost capacity in our elementary schools. There shouldn't be a difference between schools and their, their social or economic background. I don't mean to do quite counterpoint here, but okay. So the thing is, it's not just filling that school. If we, if this were a brand-new city, and we said, well, we're going to put the schools, we go here, 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 here. Who's going to go to the schools? We just draw lines that look like we're basically offended. So it's, the emphasis for doing it now is the new school. But it's not just the new school, it's, it's fifteen years of overdoing it. So it's either we fix, fix it with as little pain as possible. The mayor and six school committee members down the road are going to have to fix it somewhere or another.
Sorry, I just wanted to get back to Melissa's point, which is, let the, let the new school just be as is via one, is what you're saying. Which is, is that basically, I guess what I'm asking is, is that, you know, correct me on my words if they're wrong, is basically saying, we're not allowed, we're not, unless you're assigned to that school, you're not going there. Is that what, is that what you're saying?
Or if you want to invoke the school choice policy and, but.
So I have a comment about that. I think the area of which has been proposed to go to East Gloucester Veterans School makes sense geographically. I think it, those kids go to Beeman, which is a harder, more difficult for parents to, to get to, right? Physically get to. I think, as we've heard from many families, they, that many families will probably stay put in their existing school. But I think to give more, to give the area of which that school has kids, families zoned, makes sense to do now, so that if families want to go there, and there's new families and whatever, they, they can. We also don't want to, I mean, school choice, you know, is wonderful for many individual reasons. But from a traffic perspective, it's going to create a situation at the new school that by having families actually districted there, choose to go there, there'll be a bus, and they'll be on that bus. They won't have to, you know, be driven or walk or whatever. So I do think, I do think naturally that at the new school, the enrollment will grow based upon, you know, that particular area, and there'll be choice requests. But I think it can accommodate both based upon the number presented. And no one's being forced to move in there. It will be their choice. And I think having more of the downtown area have that as their district provides the opportunity to get families into a new school that may choose that that's.
I just wanted to talk it out, right? I mean, I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure that we're discussing as many issues that are floating around out there as possible.
Laura, did Laura want to say anything? Did you want to say anything, Laura? You good?
I'm good, I'm just, I'm listening, I'm glad we're, I'm really glad we're having a good discussion of this.
So I can bring up the topic, which is school choice for siblings. And the policy, as it is written, that people who have siblings at school, for parents who are concerned about their younger child that's not in school yet, that that is in an oper, that is in operation. It's not a guarantee, but it is consistently applied for anybody who has younger siblings. So just putting statements, I'm not suggesting any changes for that, but that does exist.
Well, it's an option, it's an option.
It's an option.
So just to clarify for people, so say we do a five-year plan, right? And you have a sibling coming in, you decide to stay versus move to a new district, that there is the possibility that that sibling would be able to choice in, but it's not a guarantee.
Based on the current school choice.
Based on the current school choice policy, but it also is based on how many kids, right? So for example, last year, they were many, I think we're full in every kindergarten?
Three of them.
Three of the schools.
Beeman was very tight, was tight to begin with.
Yeah.
Plum and West Parish were both at capacity.
Yeah, so some siblings were not allowed to come into school, so that it does happen, right? So I, you know, I think as we talk about that possibility, I think it's really important for families to, to understand that it's still a risk, you know, that you wouldn't, your sibling, your child sibling wouldn't necessarily be able to attend.
Well, the lady questioned about that. What's been the, when that happened, you have the kid there, the second kid, sorry, there's no room. Is it sort of some parents say, okay, we'll do the two schools, or, and some say, no, we're going to take him to the school he's supposed to be?
They both have.
Yeah.
So we had, not, there's not a lot of examples of this.
Right.
But where the school where the younger student was going, because they couldn't go to where a sibling is, and he moved to where the younger sibling is.
So staying together trumps, staying together.
No, no, this is, this is one example, this is one example.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, one example, yeah, so in that case, yes. In another case, they split them, split them, and yeah, so.
There's really no formula, it's just.
Yeah, no, it's a circumstance, right? This family, that depends on, you know, everything, everything we're talking about, you know, childcare, transportation, and, you know, flexibility employment, and where you can be home, and it's sort of like, so.
So one more thing to add, though, too, also to what people know, is if that next child does get its choice spot, then after the five years of grandfathering, the transportation would be done. So that would have to be part of the understanding. And that may be inconvenient, but it may be something they say, I will figure that out very soon.
But that five years could be at that point only two years left of the second kid. About five years, that would be.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it could be one year.
Yeah.
Right, it could be one year, it's a kid's in fourth grade.
Well, they begin, yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying after the five years is over, responsibility for transportation is on the path.
Right, because we want to be in our new.
I mean, because, because they, those students, those siblings would have been allowed to know the, the choice policy. Nothing to do with the, with the schools.
So my question to you then is, and I think I've asked you this before, and I forget the answer. When you look at the school choice policy, what number are you using as a cutoff to say no? Is it twenty? Is it twenty-four?
No, it's typically twenty or twenty-one. Because, in, in fact, that's actually, I think kindergarten, and that's where most of the faces at, right?
Yeah, that's where they start.
It's actually mistaken to do twenty, twenty-one, because as soon as you have folks who move into, you know, move into a school zone, either from another school or from outside Gloucester, then they're, of course, more obligated to get a spot in that school where they're in the zone they live in. And so you, that's how, it doesn't happen, West Parish is experiencing this in a couple of grades. And, you know, Plum has the possibility of experiencing it first grade. So I think we have to be very diligent about not getting a, a school through choice up to twenty or twenty-one. It, it, it behooves us, especially in that kindergarten grade, to give, to allow room. Otherwise, we're, we're just, you know, we're boxing ourselves. Yeah, we're boxing ourselves, I think that's great. So that's, that'd be really clear.
Do we specify that in our policy?
No.
Do you think that should be part of this process, it's being clearer about?
Well, we're talking, you talk about class size guideline, it's okay. And, you know, and, listen, class size twenty is, is incredibly great, okay? As I said, most other schools are at a smaller class size, which is like even more than incredibly great, right? I mean, it's twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, even twenty-four in an elementary classroom. It's not great or ideal, we don't want to go there. But, you know, so the reason we're aiming around twenty now is because that's what our enrollment and our class and our school sizes can, can allow for. And we see that continue, you know? Just, I, I just, I don't want to say that twenty-two or twenty-two is some horrendous number, it's not, you know?
It's, it's not my childhood through elementary school, it's either twenty-three, twenty-four the entire time.
But I guess, sir, when we're looking sort of at the big picture, right? If you have one school that has a really small number in comparison to another one, there's a lot of kids choosing in, you have to sort of, you have to sort of consider that, and I would assume that that would be part of that discussion.
Yes.
Right, there's only fourteen at Plum Cove, but there's a whole bunch of kids choice in into Beeman, let's say, and the numbers are really high.
Right, and twenty-one, twenty-two, we, we want to avoid that disparity.
Right, it's not equitable, right?
And that's another part of making sure that the zones are, are, you know, make sense, they're clear, excuse me, but also that they're built in a way where you won't have that, I know. But I think you're right, that often it'll be school choice decisions which, which, which contribute. It's, 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 I mean, it's coming, so it's something, we watch closely, and it's something that's a little bit of a whack right now, so. Laura?
Oh, Laura, go ahead.
No, so this is just a follow-on on, on this. I mean, it's sounding like, and maybe we should separate this out a little bit, like, we should look at our school choice policy again. And maybe, I mean, that's sort of what I'm hearing, that maybe, you know, we'll get through this and we'll, we'll figure out what works here, and then we'll be, have a clear, you know, maybe a clear directive in our school choice policy, which I believe is always at the, I mean, Ben, it's always at your discretion, correct?
Ultimately, that decision's mine, yes.
Right.
But, but I mean, I consult with principals, I can still, so.
Right.
We hear from families and hear what, what our situation is, so.
It just sounds like, as a follow-on, once we make this policy, that just to make that policy more clear and more understandable for everyone, seems like it may be useful in sort of.
Laura, our policy, you know, we went through, we do a policy years ago, and we looked at, we've looked at the policy. And I think operationally, it's working.
Okay, I just feel like we need some clarity, I, I, I guess that's what I'm hearing, like, we're trying to clear it up here.
Well, it talks about class size, right? So it, it has that most important piece, so.
Okay.
I, I think, I think the piece actually, I mean, it's up to the committee whether or not to review the policy, that's not my decision. It, it's a complicated policy, you know, I, I think that's, that's why, you know. It's, I mean, that's, I think, what, what, what we're speaking to now, just to sort it out, understand how it makes an impact on families or our district or our school, just, just come here, but you know, that's.
But to that point, I think it's complicated, because we wanted the superintendent to have a lot of flexibility in it, you know, for, for issues that come up that we can't predict. And like I said, I'm asking you what your number is in your head, but I think it was intentional that we didn't put numbers in the policy, because there could be a situation that we went over a number that we may not have the year before, and we wanted that flexibility and not create havoc if we did go over that number once and then didn't do it for everybody else going forward. So it's complicated, like, we're trying to avoid doing this, but it allows the flexibility that we wanted to have with families.
Yeah, and then I think, I think we add that so we can understand each situation.
That's important. Any other things on your top, on your bullet list?
I have a whole page of comments that I wrote, you know, but I'll save those in my closing, closing statement.
I'm just trying to figure out closing statement, because what are we doing, is what I want to ask. Because it sounds to me like we're, we're putting it back in the superintendent's lap to come forward to us at another time. To.
Could be helpful to me, any other sort of significant issues that you want, that you, that, that there are, like specific topics or issues for you folks to deliberate and like you have come to an agreement on the one through, I think, the, the five year. That's what, that's many years, and I need to hear your discussion deliberation on any of those specific topics.
Other than the, for me personally, other than the five-year consideration, any other bullets that I would throw would be just looking for something for one specific commenter to solve issue, family-by-family issues. And I, I don't think it's feasible for us to look at that, where if you have seven people looking to solve individual issues. So I think that's the one that seemed, we all seem to agree universally, agree on. I think that's the simplest, as I said, we, we, we need to, in my mind, need to make a decision. No inaction, there's nothing to go, and it's not going to please everybody, it's just, it's, you know, to be again, there are no accidents, whatever votes we take will not please everybody. But I think the five-year one reduces the pain to a level that helps reduce the anxiety. Yeah.
So the, the one topic I want to just revisit for you to maybe do some work on is transportation.
How the five years impacts that.
Yeah, so, so looking at that great map that we hope to get to with the boundaries that make more sense than what we have now. I'm wondering, so it, it kind of falls under the school choice policy as well. If we do get to a point some way down the road where a parent chooses to choice in, is there an ability for transportation if it's near a bus stop that's not full? And that's not something you can answer now, but I would just like to explore that instead of just saying a hard no. And that goes to your issue with the equity for those that may not be able to drive. If we know a child can get to a bus stop that's already on that way to the school that's close by, because the boundaries make sense now, would that, would that child be allowed to take the bus? That's just something I'd like to explore.
Well, to give a simple example, if there's a sibling that gets in on choice, there's older siblings on the bus, why would that kid get on the bus? Not, it's not a, any, that might be a special scenario where it's a sibling. It's not just a new family that's decided to choice to the school.
So fourth grade is in the school, new kid coming in, that came in under school choice, they both live in the same house, can meet each bus, even though one's a choice in.
Right, yeah.
But we're saying, within that five-year period, within that five-year period.
Within the five-year period.
Then we have transportation for the five years.
No, they already have transportation for the five years, I'm talking about year six. So year six, because you could have someone, a family that's still involved in that year before preschool, or two more years left in preschool, that they're, they're, that five years is over, so technically they're supposed to go to another school. But they've been allowed to choice in.
Yeah.
Under the school choice policy, but technically our school choice policy says no transportation.
For that sixth year.
For that sixth year, but there's still a student in, there's still a sibling in the school. Can they get there?
So if there's room in the bus, they can get to the school.
Exactly.
So, I mean, just to, just to clarify, okay? I'm going to just paint a scenario, okay? So you have a kindergarten student, and you're going to Beeman, you want to stay at Beeman, which is fine, if you, you know, you have a five-year transition period. You have, you get to fourth grade, a, a sibling comes in in kindergarten, through choice, okay? At that point, there's still transportation.
Okay.
Okay, because you're still within five years.
Right.
Okay. The next year, after, actually, two more years, okay? There's no more transportation, because it's after five years. Are you asking to continue transportation for the, the, the sibling who came in in, like, kindergarten?
If there's room on the bus.
But there's no bus going there.
So there, the way these boundaries are drawn, there's, there's going to be bus stops that are close to each other.
Yeah, so, right, so close, right.
So close, the ones that are close, so we're not adding the bus room to go to a different place, but only allowing the child to either be brought to that bus stop by a parent that could be a couple of streets away. And I mean, I know this is a conversation for probably six years from now, it's still right now, but I just want to make sure that it's at least discussed, you know, at some point.
On, on, on the surface, it sounds like it's, it sounds like the right thing to do.
But then we'll have the two schools combined, I was just.
I'm just worried, I don't have to worry about this, you know, from experiences, setting, you know, very weary about setting precedents and like, all of a sudden you got.
Yeah, because somebody else will say, oh, I don't want to drive to West Parish, what if I brought my child to the bus stop that I can get them to?
Yeah.
Who's not in this scenario, so that's the.
Again, I think it's sound logical, but it sounds like it could be done without much fanfare, but.
Only having came for the parent that doesn't have a bus, I mean, a car, and can't get there. But yet they, their child wants to stay in the school. That's my only the hardship, the hardship, exactly.
That's true. Um, so I have a question that does not, that does not need to be part of our um, this particular thing, but it's related, is just to make sure that um as a side thing, we evaluate what uh spaces we have and services we're providing and make sure we are prepared at our schools.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's safe to say we're not voting tonight? So I would say it's probably, I'm I'm hearing consensus, I'm hearing we need um we need feedback to either validate or to have us talk more about it.
Information siblings, information transportation, and and transportation is a couple of different questions, one one about the five years and one about whether or not uh transportation keeps on going.
Which isn't that important, but I just wanna keep that in the conversation somewhat.
Ben, do you?
It actually might be a school choice conversation, it's a school choice conversation.
Right. Yeah.
Do you feel that you need to, that it's prudent for you to go back and talk to the transportation about going from the three to the five years? I mean, that, does that make sense to you, that it needs to, that needs to take place, that conversation?
I think this needs to settle for a little bit.
Laura's a great person, Laura's a very flexible person, she's able to solve, solve problems, but Ian, I probably should check with her.
Yeah.
Same as this period.
It may have been, I'm gonna put that down.
Yes, I think it makes sense.
I think this is important too, that we don't take the vote tonight, because with people listening, the word will get out and there might be something that we're missing and haven't discussed, and it could come, it gives us time for it to come forward. You know, I don't want this to look rushed, but at the same time, understand that there's deadlines, that we have to make decisions.
Is there a deadline for the, you know, with the new school, if there be in a window to rezone? Is there a deadline?
But we we just want to make sure, I mean, so kindergarten enrollment and other enrollment will begin, you know, in January, or in February, that sort of thing. We want people to know ahead of time, we wanna make sure we can communicate to folks and and, I mean, I don't, so we wanna make sure that the, as soon as you can make a decision, then we can start communication with families, with, you know, real, with realtors, you know, um, that sort of thing, so it's just, it's just um, better to do sooner rather than 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 later. And I think, I think it makes sense for the committee's decision to, to, you know, uh, wait another meeting, you know, October the sixth. Um, and then I think that that gives us sufficient time to make sure we educate people, inform them, they understand, you know, because it's, it's still, I mean, anything you decide is complicated, okay? Um, this will be, I think, pretty straightforward, but we need to help people, and it just takes time, you know.
Right, yeah. Um, just to I've seen just as many comments about this being long overdue as I have seen people being worried about it, right, so just in terms of like, why are we doing this, right? Um, and why now? Parents who are concerned, right, have every right to be concerned, but I think a lot of people are like, yeah, it makes sense, right? The the zones are really messy, um, and there are parents who are saying, I've never understood why I drove by Beeman to go to Plum Cove. Um, and so I I do think, just to sort of again justify and emphasize that this is important to do now um, because it's so long overdue, um, that people, it ma, I think it makes sense for people in the in the community, right? People understand why we're doing it.
And just I wanna comment about the comments that were made tonight for the public and and thank what was said, because it was clearly, they they gave an appearance of a school being targeted um and misrepresented, and I think tonight, I I love the camaraderie coming out defending the schools and and being truthful, saying, you know, we have equitable curriculum throughout all the schools and and that is our goal, to make sure that that happens and continues to happen, so some of the comments that were made prior were inaccurate, and that's what fuels disappointment towards the school committee, is when things like that get talked about and they're misinformed or not formed enough.
Yeah, or misunderstood, or, you know, folks didn't intend, intend to disparage anybody else, but but it was received that way and
Yeah.
understand that, you know, and then, but listen, you know, there, especially in communities there and states that are diverse and Gloucester, okay? And listen, our diversity is absolute, hundred percent, right, this is one of the things that makes, that diversity in our, and Gloucester is diverse in so many different ways, okay? You know, in language and and neighborhood and history and culture and, and, you know, your new role in Gloucester, that sort of stuff, and um, you know, and and and, anyway, so and 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 my my point is that, you know, communities that's diverse, it is hard to be in a place where you make this tough decision like this, and we can say honestly, not that our schools are perfect, but that each of them has a really consistent approach, and we work so well together or across them. That's not a very common thing, you know, many, most communities have very serious spirits, okay, practice, approach, principles, and all sorts of things, okay, and Gloucester, all of you, and many of the folks in our schools, our teachers and others um, have worked really hard to make that coherence, that consistency, that's their real strength, it really is.
It is, every time we get a presentation on anything at the elementary level in terms of curriculum work or um, practice or whatever, you just see the pride from the teachers and the um, and the teamwork across the schools, which is a huge strength, because we have a lot of great minds, making great things happen. Can I ask a question without us going backwards?
I don't know, depending on what you do. It's, it's, no, it's more of a clarification on information that came out at our last meeting. So we were talking about um the area going from Beeman to Plum Cove, and it was Patriot Circle in that area.
Yeah.
I I thought, and I'm looking at a chart and I'm seeing otherwise, is that area being divided in any way, or is it staying whole?
So it's, it's.
Because I thought I heard it was divided, but when I look at the chart, it stays whole.
Yeah, I mean. Let me show the math. And also, let me show the streets, so actually, let me show the streets first.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at this, uh, streets that were going to where.
You wanna be looking at the Beeman Plum Cove.
Yes, exactly.
So and let me, sorry, on the street listing, and then I'll show you on. So this is, these are the streets that are switching from Beeman to Plum Cove, so Patriot Circle's all Patriot Circle is switching.
Yeah.
And then Veterans Way from forty-one and above, all Veterans Way right now goes to um, goes to Beeman. Forty-one and above will go to Plum Cove, I'm sorry, all Patriot Circle will go to Plum Cove. Okay, switch Plum Cove, and then uh, Veterans Way, folks living at forty-one and above. Let me show you what it looks on the map, on the map, it just, it just, it's always easier on, easier, easier to understand or see on the map, can you move here? So, uh, you see on your screen, we zoom in here. So right now, so that's the area that's changing. Right now, this old Ford Road and Veterans Way, so if you, I don't know, if you can see, old Ford Road, Veterans Way, which would are Beeman now and would remain Beeman. Okay, Patriot Circle, and this part of Veterans Way would switch to, would switch to Plum Cove. And and the, you know, buses are there and circles, and that, and that's.
And do we have, is that is, is that approximately? Is there a lot of anyone?
Uh. Uh, if folks wanna talk about something else, why don't you look this up? Or, uh.
I just struggled with that a little bit, so before we formalize anything, I wanted to have that discussion.
Uh, what's the, sorry, what's the?
Dividing Veterans Way into two schools as opposed to them all going to the same school like they've been doing.
And what had been the the map that he just had up there?
Showed old Ford Road and part of Veterans Way going, staying at Beeman, and then the rest going to Plum Cove, and I'm just trying to figure out how many families that is, and is it, does it make sense to split it up?
Just give it a little, sorry.
Also two.
So, that is uh, in in, well. So so right now, in grades K one is ten total students. Grades K one is ten total students.
It's ten in that area?
Yeah, yeah, in in grades K one, combined, grades two, three, and four is twenty-five students.
For the entire area.
For the ti, for 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 the ones of Patriot Circle, Veterans Way would be impacted.
Twenty, what'd you say, Ben, twenty-five, twenty-four?
Twenty-five for two, three, and four, ten for one and two, K, sorry, K one, you know, um, and remember, though, we also have said that, you know, with five years, actually, none of those students necessarily impacted.
Right, unless they wanna be.
Right, unless they wanna be, right, it's going forward.
And there's no transportation, unless they.
So I guess Melissa's question is how many in total, so some are, some are having, you know, the choice to go or the, the thing, so.
It's actually, it's actually, yeah, right, so so i- in that neighborhood, right now, K to five, it's se- seventy students.
Seventy students.
Total, just happened to be exactly a half, but that's just, you know, thirty-five are on the Patriot Circle in that part of Veterans Way. Just coincidence, but but total number of students living in Patriot Circle, Veterans Way right now is seven. Okay?
Okay. I'm just.
But in terms of, in terms of the, you know, if we, with the three-year transition, it's ten impacted, K one, total, um, and there were, of, of, in total, it's thirty-five. Um, that's again, into the, but that, those are the students who actually are impacted. I mean, Melissa chose.
We're saying that the, um, you know, if we apply school choice and maybe allow them to walk to a bus stop in the neighborhood, that might be a situation.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, that's what I was, not necessarily for that neighborhood, but that is this neighborhood, I was thinking of.
Sounds like a likely scenario.
Yeah. In the school times, there was another question I had asked you about the school times, so.
So school times need to adjust next year, because, because right now, veterans, these foster have two different start times. So we're just not there in deciding that, though, if, depending on what we decide, may impact other schools.
Don't do any more changes, people will.
Well, we have to. That's part of this problem, right, so we have two kids and siblings at different schools and different time.
What I'm saying is, if these costs are met, someone's gonna change.
Right, right, right.
It has to, okay, there are different times now, we won't grant them their old start time.
I just didn't want to introduce anywhere else, so we, so, I don't want to have a ripple effect.
I, I do not purposely try to up 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 to create. That minimizes the pressure.
All right, so, um, as the public has heard, we are not voting this evening, it will come back before the committee next week, or next meeting. Um, we'll get some information from the superintendent and likely be able to come to some processes. So thank you all for speaking passionately, those people who spoke on this topic this evening. Um, we appreciate your input and we certainly next is uh, the process of the setting of superintendent goals and evaluation process.
Uh, yes. Apparently, folks are leaving, they don't wanna see this part of the meeting, so. Not her. Uh, no, but actually, first, we're gonna show you is just uh, back to steps, take a couple steps back.
Okay.
Um, first, actually, I wanna start with O'Malley, let's go down here a little bit. What you see here is backyard growers, growers working, our eighth-grade students at O'Malley School today, beautiful Wednesday afternoon. Um, the eighth graders are checking the soil, that the, the health of the soil. Um, working with Amy Donnelly and backyard, and backyard growers, and um, and 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 checking the health of the soil items today, uh, includes primarily counting the worms.
Really? Oh, my God, I love that.
Right, and so, uh, kids, as you can see, kids are digging and exploring and counting, and also, you know, um, tracking, and then they will add nutrients to the soil, they will add a, 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 a winter ground cover, in this case, winter wheat. That wheat, that wheat will grow across the the next upcoming months into the springtime, which hopefully, sort of, whatever, is complete. And then it end up making bread that wheat, in the springtime. It's the first year that the backyard growers are working here through O'Malley, but uh, just the beginning of, I think, is a multi-months process, it goes from checking for worms to making bread and eating bread, so I think that's a pretty good process, so. Great for eighth grade, um, so it's Amy, um, Donnelly, and of course, our great partners, backyard growers. And then going backwards here, this is our, a new playground, um, at, at, we talked about earlier, without children, this was on Sunday. Um, I stopped by when they completed putting the uh, wood fiber down. And then this was today, and there's there, and the PTO leader is Deanna Benjamin, is the PTO president right here, and two of the folks, Gillian Beeba, I'm sorry, I'm the third one. Sorry, uh, but they were involved in designing the playground, and then you see them having popsicles, the students are getting ready to, and then, um, students on swings, and then, um, students all around playing on the play, on the, on the, here's the ribbon cutting here, uh, just for ribbon cutting with the students and the adults, and then here you can see, uh, right inside, lots of kids playing on, on both on the, what they say, one old element, which was the monkey bars, I believe, um, and then all the other ones renewed. And so plenty of room to run around and play, also football and basketball, so. The, uh, this is just, I'm just sharing you the goals and timeline, the timeline, the timeline, so, um, which is what I do first, and then we get into goals, uh, starting in November. I'll present my draft goals, June number nine, uh, and get input from the committee on that. But we, have we done this in programs of committee as well before? I wonder what have. Uh, school committee deliberates and gives the input, and then we'll, we'll consider and adopt the goals on November twenty-third. Um, now that we have a plan, our three-year plan, I'm going to be based on that, okay, so it won't be, you know, about doing more new things, as you guys know. Um, but based on that, every year, succeeding is based on that as well, so we'll be able to do this earlier, um, uh, in the school year, and most likely not have that, and then very large items uh, in the school year we have this year, so we'll be able to do this at an earlier, earlier stage, it's in terms of just my, my end goals. And then, as as this committee did last year, the whole process of reviewing those, early May, I provide evidence of progress towards my goals. Um, folks look, use the Department of Education rubric to review the evidence, the rubbish rubric. And submit that to the, uh, to school committee chair, and then compile those, completes those, and then reports out. Terms of, we'll have have very specific dates to make sure that the data's aligned with my contract, um, and what has to be reviewed and deadlines in that. So we'll have those, you know, when I come back. Just wanted to give you a heads up on the process going forward.
I just wanted to comment that this is going from a one-year process to a seven-month process.
Well, usually we do the goals earlier.
Yeah.
Um, so I just wanna be mindful of that next year.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and that, and that's why, that's why I was just trying to say, was that, um, you know, now that we have a plan for ongoing improvement in place, and and also because we won't be doing very gigantic things hopefully every single month, um, in the, in the fall. But of course, I give you evidence on, on all of that work from, from, you know, July one
Okay.
of the previous, of this current year, so.
Well, we haven't set your goals yet.
Right, right.
So.
But you'll have.
Next year, a little earlier.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, hundred percent, yeah, that's, that's.
Even creating that plan might have been four number one.
Excuse me, Laura?
Yeah, just a question, I mean, is this something that should, should go in front of programs? Uh, you know, I just, I I'm just wondering about process here.
So personally, I could try and mention program, I I couldn't, I, it's up to the committee.
It should be personnel, because it has to do with your goals.
Okay, I just.
Personal, but.
Okay, I just couldn't remember, it's because of P.
One year, we actually, one year, we actually did it, that each subcommittee had a discussion if there was any goals out of their subcommittee and then presented them, which is the way I like it, but.
I I will have goals, oh, I think goals are I don't know, uh, let's see the draft.
But if if each subcommittee puts it on their agenda, then that subcommittee. But if, if each subcommittee puts it on their agenda, then that subcommittee can talk about what potential goals they'd like to see.
Haven't done that in three years, and it's gone very well so far.
I know, and I bet it down to seven months, doesn't it?
No, it hasn't, sorry. No, no, this is the same time frame you used the past two years.
Yeah.
Now, there have been other six, any circumstances?
No, I know, because of COVID and everything else, so I know.
So.
I'm just playing with you.
Okay. I'm taking that one. So I'll bring the goals forward and everything back. Looking forward to see. It shouldn't change. It shouldn't change. We see some consistency. That's all.
Okay. Alright, so we will move on to and we have an approval and acceptance of the following grants. They seem to all be kind of regular grants, not, right, they're all kind of well, should I, should I do them individually? Do I want to talk about any of them?
I can speak to them if you have a question. Let's go over which each one is.
You wanna, yeah, why don't you, we can do them one at a time if you, because sometimes we love to acknowledge and appreciate to do with grants too.
So the first grant, the three twenty four mass grad promising practices grant, that is the RACE program of the high school, is to reengage students and to prevent dropout. Amy Kim is overseeing that, and it's a partnership with the high school and the justice, the JRI, Justice Institute. The next one, Twenty First Century, I'm sure you're very familiar with, that's the O'Malley Academy, it's a continuation of that. I'm learning that it goes down a little each year, so we're working on streamlining that as well. McKinney Vento is the homeless act, and it's to provide services and education to students that are in need. In the final one, Safe and Supportive Schools, it's eighteen thousand. They're going to be creating a team to utilize, and to utilize the Safe and Supportive School staff assessment, I like the name. And it's to use the self-assessment and the reflection tool to develop an action plan for the following year. It will be, this grant includes stipends for counselors and a data person and to, you know, look at you know, the results of that survey and create an action plan moving forward.
So we'll take the grants individually. I move that we approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty three, three hundred and twenty four mass grad and promising practice grant in the amount of forty five thousand.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minia?
Yes.
I move that we approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty three Twenty First Century Grant, six forty five slash two forty four grant in the amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars.
Second.
Discussion? I just want to say it's great that this grant continues to come in because so many, I think there's at least a third of those students at O'Malley that participate in this every term that they have programs. So it's really a huge benefit to that, to that school, and they do a great job with the programs that they provide.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minia?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty three McKinney Vento Homeless Education, three hundred and ten grant in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars. Any other discussion? Rock, call vote, please.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Minia?
Yes.
I move that we approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty three, three hundred and thirty five Safe and Supportive Schools Competitive Grant, the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and ninety six dollars.
Second, yeah.
Rock, call vote, please.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Minia?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Next item of action is approval of the ASPA Unit A memorandum of agreement effective July first, two thousand twenty two, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. Do you want to?
I can quickly go over it, sure. We talked about it in the executive session, but for the public. We, starting July first, two thousand twenty two, this will be a three-year contract for Unit A, ASPA. In year one, it'll be a two point two five percent increase plus fifty cents. In year two, it'll be two point five percent plus one dollar. And then year three, it will be a two percent plus one dollar increase. We added Juneteenth as a holiday. We made some changes to vacation time for new hires, and we have a notification of retirement incentive, which is new for the unit.
I make a question?
Yeah. I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement, of agreement between ASPA and school committee as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Maria, rock, call vote, please.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Minia?
Yes.
And the next order of business is approval of the superintendent's contract effective July first, two thousand twenty three, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six. I think it's not the, the contract basically stays the same with the exception of updating dates for this particular three-year period. It includes a rollover provision for a fourth year with language that has notification on it before December first, two thousand twenty three, shall notify the superintendent in writing if it does not wish to extend the terms of the contract for the additional year. Failure of the committee to give such notice shall be considered the same as noticed by the committee that wishes to extend the contract. In such event, the agreement shall renew for one additional year term effective July first, two thousand twenty six. All the other language in that contract basically stays the same with dates being updated before the new term. And the second piece that gets added to the contract is a retention incentive. And the language is, the superintendent shall receive payments in recognition of his years of service to the district as defined below. Each made payable in the final payroll of the fiscal year following the fourth full year of service to the district at the end of twenty three, twenty four school year and fiscal year, the superintendent will receive two thousand dollars. Following the fifth full year of service to the district at the end of the twenty four, twenty five school and fiscal year, the superintendent will receive twenty five hundred dollars. Following the sixth full year of service to the district at the end of twenty five, twenty six school and fiscal year, the superintendent will receive three thousand dollars. And following the seventh full year of service to the district at the end of twenty six, twenty seven school and fiscal year, the superintendent will receive three thousand dollars. And I will move that we, oh, you should do the motion because you. I make a motion that we approve the contract between Superintendent Ben Lummis and the Gloucester School Committee and authorize the chair to sign on the committees we have.
Second.
Discussion? We have four more years.
You're stuck.
Thank you.
Wait, you haven't voted, right?
No. Maria, rock, call vote, please.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes unanimously and enthusiastically.
Very much. It is, I, I love working here. We have a fantastic team all across the board, all our schools. People who care deeply, work really hard, are very smart, talented, they want to do best for Gloucestershire children. And I couldn't ask for any better place to be, to, and better folks to work with. And in a, in a better community to serve. This is a special place that I I'm glad to be able to live about it, and I don't want to look forward to it.
You can have a logo.
I think I did, I did forty or fifty years before that.
It was wrong, Ross Lobster Pause, it did it.
Get better with that, maybe. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Yeah, it's a lot.
Okay. And that is the last of the action. The next item is discussion and other communication. Update on the East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building Committee.
Um, so just to give a brief update on a few things that are happening in the buildings. Things as exciting as continued installation of heat pumps in classrooms and the wiring of ductwork in building A. Also, they're, we completed, this week completed, they're main, working on the remaining exterior wall framing and sheathing, the vapor barrier in building B, which is, if you remember, that's where the cafeteria and gym is, where the school entrance is. They're continuing curtain wall installation, which are the, sort of, you know, their big windows, everything. Unbroken mechanical work on, on all levels of building B. And then in building, building A, continuing sheet rock installation and taping at, at levels two and three, so really get, really very much on interior work on building A. And continue to close the building, work on mechanical building B. The other piece, which Ms. Passgro is more involved in, is the furniture. And really, the furniture, can you explain what's happening with furniture at both schools right now with samples?
Yeah, so we had two versions of samples. Half went to East Gloucester, half went to Veterans. It was at each school for two weeks and then they swapped. So, teachers and students, administrators, members of the furniture, furniture committee, whatever, got to test it out and give their opinion. There's a Google form where teachers are able to give their comments, and we're meeting tomorrow to go over the second round of furniture, to make some decisions of how we're gonna furnish the building.
We are very conscious of timelines on furniture and also very conscious of collection of furniture. You know, we've been able to pull, we, the product teams will, they'll hold costs down, you know, in some areas. I expect furniture to be more expensive than originally budget, originally planned, but because we have made good choices and well managed, that should be, that should work out fine. But very conscious of, the team's very conscious of, I mean, you know, the the design team and the product manager are very conscious of timelines regarding furniture, so to do that pace, on schedule, and make some great decisions with some new furniture. Good-looking and functional and sturdy.
Flexible, flexible.
Flexible too.
Right, the whole building is designed for flexible learning, with the sliding walls and the furniture will be able to be drawn in different configurations as well, so.
And the options that are there, do we know or anticipate that there won't be a delay?
That's why we're, we're doing this typically earlier in the timeline than normal building projects. I think they moved it up about three months or something.
As possible.
Yeah, they moved it up in, because of the possible delays.
And there's a building committee meeting tomorrow, in fact, for the monthly building. Any other business? I would like to refer to the personnel subcommittee, a discussion of creating a potential work from home policy. But that's been a topic of discussion in many businesses. I don't know that that means we create one, but I just want to set some boundaries and standards and expectations if someone is going to be allowed to work from home. It doesn't have to be soon, because I know there's a lot of back work to do to get to the conversation as far as looking at best practices. But I just think that that's a conversation that should be had. Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Maria, rock, call vote?
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Verga?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Chairperson Blancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Minia?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone who attended this evening.
Good night.